Hello, everyone. Welcome to June 17, 2014 Board of Selectment meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, I'd like to have the election for Chair, Vice Chair, and Parliamentarian. Do I have any motions?
Make a motion for the Vice Chair.
I'm second.
Motion in second. Have a vote.
Well, you should have had nomination cease. I'll make a motion that nomination ceases.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Okay.
Three to one?
No.
Three to...
No, you voted. That was for nominations to cease.
Oh.
Do a vice? Oh, that was for the...okay, I understand.
You can vote on my...
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Let's have a vote.
Okay.
So, four zero for Mike.
Four to zero, Mike. So, do I, at this point, do I turn it over to Mike or do I do Vice Chair?
You could finish up.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that Lonnie Taylor is Vice Chair.
Second. Making a motion to cease nominations.
Second.
Vote.
I'm just gonna say...
Okay, let's have another vote now.
There you go.
Okay. Last one, let's have a...any nominations for Parliamentarian?
Make a motion for Joe Bruno to be Parliamentarian.
Second.
Motion to cease.
Second.
Vote.
That's on the motion, now vote again.
Okay, let's vote again.
Lonnie, that was very efficient.
Okay.
Now that we're practicing our voting.
Here we go.
I'm passing it.
Thank you, Lonnie.
You're welcome. Thank you. No, thank you. Absolutely.
I'll be the hitter for you.
You're gonna be the hitter? Uh, no. We're gonna put this way over here. I did want to say, before we get started tonight, that since the last Select Board meeting, I think what has happened in town has been fabulous. I think we had one of our better town meetings that we've had in years. And I don't say that because of what passed or what didn't pass. I say that because of the participation. We had a larger turnout probably than we've seen at any town meeting since the RSU left the town meeting process. And I think that the outpouring of comments, both pro, con, and even some neutrals, was very important to the process here in Raymond. I was not on the positive side on some of the issues, but, you know, in the final analysis, I don't think that's important as it is that we get the participation we received and the input we received. So, I was very proud to be part of that process, and I did want to recognize the folks in town who came out and participated in that. I'd also like to congratulate the winners of the Select Board election. Lonnie Taylor, who earned another three-year term, thanks to the folks of Raymond, and for Sam Gifford, who both received more than 50 percent of the vote of the folks who came out. So, congratulations to you, Lonnie, and to Sam, who's not here. Sam is off, I don't think he'd mind me saying this, off celebrating his anniversary with his bride. So, he is actually out of town for this meeting, so...
I probably should have mentioned that. Don't mind?
Want me to take it back? I can let you do it.
While you were still ten-year-old there.
So, anyway, I did want to mention those two things before we get started. So, now to move on to the minutes. Due to some stuff at Town Hall and being a very busy period, I'm gonna table the minutes from the May 13 meeting until our August meeting. I'm also gonna ask that going forward, if possible, that minutes of the Select Board meetings be provided to us within seven days of the meeting. That would be electronically, so that we have an opportunity to review them while the meeting is still fresh in our minds and offer comments, so that when the minutes do come back to us for the next meeting, that it's as complete as it can be. Now, I do understand that the minutes are strictly a written record of the votes, but the official record of our meetings is the videotape. So, I do understand that, but I would just request that that change going forward to make it easier for all of us that sit up here. So, moving on to new business. The presentation of the Carlton Edwards Employee Recognition Award. I would ask Joe Bruno if he would cover this issue.
It's my honor to present this award to a well-deserving employee of the town of Raymond who is retiring this year after 25 years of serving the town. I've known Louise my whole time in Raymond, which is 35 years now, and she has been the knowledge of the town. Anything that happens in town of Raymond, Louise knows about it. And, you know, it's just incredible, the memory and, you know, the knowledge of things that happened in town and the history of what's happened in town. And that's always great to have an employee like that. And she's served this town with 100 percent effort the whole time that she's been an employee of this town. It's really my honor to award, the Carlton Edwards Award, to Louise Lester. Thank you, Louise.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Speech.
Speech.
I'd just like to say that it has been an honor for me to serve the people of the town of Raymond. Every person that comes through the door, I think, has the right to expect top service. And I think the ladies and gentlemen of the town office try their best to do that. We try and make their lives a little bit easier. Usually, people don't register cars every day, so it can be a daunting process to some people, and we try to make it good for them and get the job done. We also want to see that the town is successful, that we use the taxpayers' money well, and that we try to hold the budget. And I think we do this pretty well, whether it's the Fire Department, Code Enforcement Office, or the town office. And I do want to thank the people of the town of Raymond by sticking by me through thick and thin when things have happened. I greatly appreciate the selectmen's support, as well as the town manager, and think that going forward, Raymond will continue to be the wonderful town that we all know it should be and is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, you're...
You're on your jet plane next time.
You've never retired yet. So, wait, so Louise, I'm gonna give you an option. You can sit there and enjoy the GIS presentation, or you can do your next presentation. I'm gonna give you the choice.
I'm here for leaving.
All right. Then why don't we take it out of order? I'll give...we'll move on to Item D, the Funding Request for the State of Maine. I can't say this word. Danielle?
Orthoimagery.
Orthoimagery. Thank you, Danielle. Flyover. And Danielle, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
So, basically, I'm here with John Giles, our GIS contractor, to do basically a presentation and a request for funding. The State of Maine 2015 is doing their, starting their orthoimagery flyovers, and we've had a meeting with staff and looked at the different options, and we're actually requesting a standard higher than what the state will offer for free. And this will require us to set aside monies, as well as possibly make a request moving forward into the budget. So, I'm gonna have John first tell you what it's all about and entice you and get you all excited like I am, and then I'll talk to you about money.
Okay, and just one correction to what Danielle said. Recently, I found out the state is not going to be doing the whole county as they did in 2012. So, if any towns are going to participate in 2015 with this flight, this sort of regional aerial photography flight project, it would be just the towns that are participating will get flown. The rest of the county won't at this point.
So, John, before you get started, would you introduce yourself? Tell us where you're from and all that kind of stuff?
Okay, so I'm John Giles. I'm with Sebago Technics in the Lewiston office. I live over in Gray, and I'm the company's GIS manager, and I've been providing GIS services to the town of Raymond for two years. Prior to this, I was the GIS coordinator for the city of Portland for about 12, 13 years. And after that, I was the Vice President of an aerial mapping company in Manchester, Maine. Then I joined Sebago and have been providing GIS services for Sebago for about six and a half years now.
Thank you.
I also sit on the State GeoLibrary Board and oversee the state. One of the things we oversee on the GeoLibrary Board is the collection of statewide orthoimagery data and other GIS data and make that available to the public. So, I'm here both as your consultant tonight, but also as a promoter of the program in hopes of bringing some of the benefits of the program to the town of Raymond, should you choose to participate.
Thank you.
So, I'll try to make the PowerPoint presentation as exciting as possible. But, so basically, there's this thing called the Maine Statewide OrthoImagery Program. And what it is, it's an attempt to create spatially correct aerial photography base maps for the whole state over a five- or six-year cycle. The idea is that every five or six years, the entire state will be flown, and then the cycle will start again. Each year, about a fifth of the state will be flown. York and Cumberland County represent a special situation in the program in that there is a much higher level of development change going on in southern Maine than the rest of the state. So, the program has made a concession that, should the towns want to after three years, there could be a re-flight. And the last flight that was done in this part of the state was in 2012. So, in 2015 is the opportunity for any towns that feel either they missed it, missed a chance in 2012, or that there's been enough change in their town to warrant a new flight and updating of their base maps, they can participate in that new flight. And this is what we're talking about potentially happening next spring, spring of 2015. So, again, it's potential at this point. It looks like it's going to happen. We're talking with a number of towns down on the coast, and there was a meeting, and Wyndham was there, and there's, so there's, we're trying to gauge the level of interest right now in the towns for participating in this flight. Talking with staff and about what their mapping projects are going forward, what they've been up to this point, and what sort of detail they would like to see in the maps. I've recommended, and I think staff has agreed with that, that we would go after what's called six-inch resolution imagery. And what that means is, on the computer screen, each little dot that makes up the picture, if you were to measure that on the ground, it would be six inches across. And that resolution, the size of the pixel, determines what sort of features and how much you will be able to see in the imagery. The less the resolution, the coarser the imagery looks, the blurrer it looks, the less you'll be able to see. The higher the resolution, the more detail you'll see and the more you'll be able to map. Right now, if the town were to participate at the six-inch resolution level, it would be looking at a cost at just under $11,000 for that. Just a little background on what orthoimagery is. Orthoimagery is basically an aerial photo, digital aerial photo, that has been corrected to remove a lot of the distortion inherent in aerial photography through the use of, with the use of elevation data. In the lower-left corner, you see an elevation data model of a part of Maine. And all that is, it's just, it's kind of like a fancy contour map. That data is applied to the raw aerial imagery to create a photo map that you can actually measure from, just like you would any other map. An uncorrected aerial photo, you can't reliably measure from. It's subject to certain distortions and inaccuracies. But by combining the elevation data with the raw imagery, you can actually create a photo map you can measure from. We're part of a team that's working with the state and their contractor to basically promote this program. The program is being headed up by the Maine GeoLibrary Board and the State of Maine's Office of GIS. They've hired a consultant named Woolpert out of Dayton, Ohio, and their local partners are Kappa Mapping and Shaika Shepherd &amp; Garsters out of Bangor. And the three companies are basically creating the orthophoto imagery for the whole state. Woolpert owns the planes and the mapping software to actually take the photos, turn them into digital images, and Kappa and Shaika, Shepherd &amp; Garsters are actually the ones providing the ground control and some of the quality control for the process. Applied Geographics and Sebago worked on a project on this team to do a return on investment study on the cost of orthoimagery and what the anticipated return and benefits are to towns and other organizations participating in that. If you'd like to talk about that tonight, I can also cover some of those details. We actually did a ROI study, a return on investment study, on the acquisition of orthoimagery to see what it would return to participants in terms of benefits and cost savings. The program goals of the State OrthoImagery Program is basically to create a reliable, consistent statewide data set from border to border. In doing so, we hope to promote cost efficiency, data sharing, the avoidance of unwanted or undesirable costs. Having individual towns go it alone, they'd all incur those costs time and time again. But by having a regional approach or statewide approach, we can actually cut the costs of data acquisition, map acquisition, for all the participants.
Would this be available to any resident in Raymond?
Yes. This data will be, if the town were to participate, the town gets a copy of the data, but the state will also host the data. And that data will be available 24/7 for free download by anyone in the public or the private sector. And the state actually provides an orthoimagery viewer that you can go on the Internet and look at the imagery through.
Is this something we can put on our website?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would use this imagery to actually improve and maintain the town's existing maps as well. A lot of people ask, well, why pay for this? Why can't we just get it from Google or Microsoft Bing? As a matter of fact, Google specifically actually gets some of their mapping from the state program. Maine is a rural community, rural state. It doesn't rank, or has not ranked, as high on Google's priority list as other more populated regions of the country or the world are. And as a consequence, sometimes we don't get updated maps as frequently as other areas of the country do. So, by participating in the state program, not only are we making this data publicly available through the state's auspices and the towns, but we also, the GeoLibrary Board actually provides that data to other commercial interests in an effort to get it out there in as many different venues as possible, so the return on investment, again, is multiplied by however many times we can get people using the data. So, if you actually go to Google Earth and look at some of the copyright references, a lot of times you'll see something like Maine GeoLibrary and then a date, and that's because the state has actually provided that imagery to Google. The basic program statewide, and this is the way it was in 2012, is that the state, fed, and county participants will pay for a base level of imagery, which is two-foot pixel resolution in the organized towns, one meter in the unorganized parts of the state. So, again, each pixel, each dot on the ground is gonna be two feet across. That's fairly coarse imagery. And with that sort of imagery, you oftentimes can't see things such as utility poles, sidewalks, fences. The buildings are a little blurry-looking, the roads are a little blurry-looking, but you can tell there're buildings and roads there and trees and stuff. The six-inch level that we're talking about Raymond purchasing would allow us to create additional mapping data from it. And that would have basically be done from an office setting, either by town staff or our firm providing mapping services to the town. So, you wouldn't have to send mapping crews out to collect the data all the time. You could actually do it from the office, which is a lot less expensive than sending people out with GPS receivers and surveying equipment. This is an example of two of the products that come from the program. There's, on the left, there's a natural color image, which is just, you know, what you would expect the ground to look like, looking out the window. On the right is what's called a color infrared image, and that's actually useful for mapping things such as wetlands and water and paved surfaces. It accentuates the differences between some of the surfaces so that you can actually see them more clearly. In our firm, we're actually using this to be able to map water bodies and brooks that go through the woods, 'cause you can see them much more clearly than you can in the natural color image. So, the base program, again, is, there's a three-way cost split normally between the state, fed, and county, and they buy the two-foot pixel level of information. That's what was bought in Cumberland County in 2012. Unfortunately, with some of the project cost upstate in Maine, they're not gonna be able to fly the whole county in 2015, but what they're planning on doing is just flying those towns that wish to participate. And that's where the buy-up option comes in. Normally, again, the county, the whole county would be flown at two-foot pixel resolution, paid for by the state, the fed, and the county participants, and then the towns get to buy up a resolution for the cost difference. And what they're proposing this time around in 2015, though, is to just do the buy-up options for the towns, such as Raymond. And those come in three different resolutions: three-inch pixels, six-inch pixels, or one foot. And you can see it on the, down here along the bottom, there's different pictures. Unfortunately, they're a little small, but this is one meter, and it's fairly kind of coarse and blurry-looking. And as you go across and the resolution gets better, the imagery gets sharper and more distinct, and you can see more details. This happens to be Portland Headlight in Cape Elizabeth.
It really doesn't come across so well on that slide. If you see the actual photographs, it's very pronounced.
I've got another PowerPoint that actually has individual images of baseball diamonds and stuff that shows some of that detail, and it may show up better on a screen this size. And I can switch to that here in a minute. So, if Raymond participates in 2015, what will the town receive? You'll get New Spring 2015 leaf-off imagery. Leaf-off is important, because a lot of times when Google collects imagery or Bing collects imagery, it's leaf-on, it's in the middle of the summer. It's very pretty. It makes more attractive maps, 'cause everything's green. But from a mapping standpoint, you can't see what's under the trees. And in a town like Raymond, where you may want to see and be able to map woods, roads, or stone walls, or fences, or you want to see where the buildings are under the trees, you may want to have leaf-off imagery. And that's one reason why the Google imagery doesn't often work well for municipal applications. As part of the project, you'll get both natural color and color infrared imagery. And the current proposal for the $10,862 price is to get six-inch resolution imagery at an L2 accuracy specification, which is the horizontal accuracy of the mapping is about plus-minus two feet, which would be consistent with the town's existing mapping and existing mapping equipment, such as the GPS equipment.
When is the exact cost locked in?
The exact cost would be locked in, I believe, in the January to March timeframe. What usually happens is, is a memo of agreement between the state and the town that's signed, committing the town to the project, allowing the state to get the final numbers and the final areas that need to be mapped, and get that to the mapping contractor who's flying the planes.
But is it dependent on fuel costs, or...
No.
No.
It's a fight, the flying contractor is governed by a five-year contract with fixed fees, fixed prices.
So, even though that says estimated cost, can we bank on that number?
I think you can. I think, the reason I said estimated is because sometimes if adjacent towns participate, that number can go down a little bit for the individual towns, because there's always a certain amount of overlap between adjacent towns. Right now, I have not heard whether Wyndham or any of the other adjacent towns are gonna be flying. So, right now, that's, if only Raymond was being flown in this neck of the woods, in this part of the county, that's the cost, according to the state.
As like Google Map or companies like that put Raymond on the map, and us, by us doing this, do, is there any funds coming back towards us for that sale of the image from, say, Google Map?
Yeah.
Or if they're, we're paying for it, but they're actually providing it also through us, through us paying for it?
Right. It's something we've talked about at the state level, and I, what the conversation usually comes down to is, if we charge too high of a fee, we probably wouldn't be able to justify it under the public record laws, because this is public data. It's being paid for with public funds. So, we probably wouldn't be able to charge too high of a fee for it. And then, it actually, if we can't get that mapping data out into other mapping tools, then the return on that initial investment may be less, because only as few platforms, few mapping platforms would be using the data. There is also, Google provides certain emergency operations, emergency management services to the state. So, there's also, I think, a contribution here that the state imagery helps, say, in an emergency situation, an ice storm or a flooding event. The imagery is there, it exists, it can be used in the Google products that the state is using for emergency management work, but it's also there in non-disaster times for people to use. We'd like to, we've looked at a couple arrangements where state or towns could get money back from some of these large commercial map providers, and usually, they're not very workable. There was one back in '01, there was one here with Greater Portland Council of Governments, and the problem with that is it was licensed data, and the town actually could not provide copies of that data to anyone other than town staff. It's just the nature of the beast with commercial mapping products. Sometimes you get into these situations where the data's licensed, and you can't do anything with it other than use it in your offices.
How does the emergency piece of it work? Because as you take the image, of course, you're taking the image of this building...
Yeah.
...in a non-emergency-type platform. When you first was saying it, I was thinking that, okay, if there was a tornado that came through, it would, that wouldn't have been caught in the image that you did before. How would that emergency-type scenario be a benefit to us?
It's useful after the fact in an emergency, like a tornado or an ice storm or a flood, because it would show what was there. Where was, where was this building before the tornado came through? So, for search and rescue, it would guide search and rescue crews to this location, and you would know there was a building there, and there should be some debris. In the larger context, you know, the mapping, my firm has used it, and I used it when I was with the city of Portland to work on county projects where we were mapping critical facilities. And as buildings moved and new facilities were built, we were able to map the new facilities and update the state databases and the county databases with those new locations.
John, what's our resolution, and maybe, I mean, you work for us, helping with our maps. What's our current resolution?
Your current resolution from 2012 is two foot.
It is two foot.
Yeah.
So, I'd love to hear from Chris or Chief on, you know, how the six-inch would help in your departments, if you, or Danielle, or however, you know, the next...
Well, when we talk to these folks about what it is, in terms of code enforcement and public safety, and, well, code enforcement assessing, it would help us to see what is on the ground. Code enforcement specifically would help us to get some base-level elevations, so that we can start working on our FEMA mapping and flood plane mapping. And then, once we get flood plane mapping squared away, then we can start with the emergency management plans, because if you find out, like, in a hundred-year storm, what's gonna be underwater, you can then say how you're gonna evacuate the town, 'cause you'll know what will be underwater, or else, you know, but we have to have this data set in place. Public Works would also be able to use this data to locate culverts, to measure them out...
Fire hydrants.
...to fire hydrants. You know, so it's kind of like a strategic service and, you know, data set in order to be able to, you know, have more information for the town to make us more functional and efficient as networked systems. So, basically, those are the four basi- So basically, those are the four basic departments that would benefit from this.
Without the imagery, it's hard to have a common and current picture of what the town looks like. I'd switch to the other PowerPoint presentation. This is an example of the resolution you have now. This, this actually is a sample image from Turner, but, so this is 24-inch pixel resolution data. You see, it's, you know, you can tell, yeah, there's a driveway there and some buildings and a yard. So it's a little blurry. The, the six-inch version of that same area is that.
Really makes a difference when you see it in this kind of format.
Yeah, assessing all, from that, assessing would be able to map the, the floor, like the footprint of that house now. You know what I mean? In terms of having to wait to go out and see what was on the ground. You know, and it also gives us a historical base map of what's on the ground. So five years from now, when the next fly ever comes over, you'd be like, well, that building wasn't supposed to be there. You know, so, because we can actually see things like sheds and garages and.
You know, in the work I do for the town, I take advantage of the free stuff as well. But this is an opportunity to capture a, a level of detail and stuff that, in a leaf-off condition that isn't typically available from the free sources currently. The next opportunity the town may have to participate in a regional flight like this looks like it's not written in stone yet, but would be spring of 2018 would be the next opportunity.
Chris?
You had asked about code enforcement. As you know, with most of the enforcement actions that I've taken since I've been in Raymond, we use Google Earth. We use pictures from Portland Water District. But that kind of quality would assist us tremendously on enforcement issues. You can tell right there, you know, you ain't going to be able to count how many trees are on the lot. You're going to be able to see if somebody's built an addition without a permit. We can use this in in the permitting process for plotting where, where their boundaries are. It would be an excellent tool for us to have. Google's good, but this is far and above a much better product from my, from my standpoint.
Yeah, and I, I know from personal experience that Google Earth with our map layover that's available in the general is off. Especially as you start doing some of those hills and you start trying to go, well, how is that lot going across the road? Well, I mean, hopefully this, this would, you know, help with that if, if that's the type of thing. And I'm guessing, please correct me if I'm wrong, Google Earth does not do as much of the correction for, that you explained at the beginning?
No, they don't.
And where our town is so hilly, a flat image laid over our hills is tough.
Yeah. Where it really shows up in the Google imagery typically is on bridges and anything where there's a, there's a sharp change in grade. You'll see that the, sometimes the bridge looks like it's kind of warped or draped over a ditch, or sometimes the image is smeared. And that's because they haven't mapped the terrain correctly, the underlying terrain.
This will also help in terms of, because FEMA is now releasing their new maps. And Raymond didn't see a lot of significant changes, but like some of our neighboring towns did. And this will help because if they show that something is supposed to be underwater and it's a steep grade and a big hill, water doesn't really go up the hill. It stays down below the hill. So this will help like in the permitting processes, Chris said, as well as to help make some of these corrections and put Raymond in a better position to stand behind its mapping. So, um, do you want me to get on to funding proposal?
Sure.
So, um, as I said, there are four departments that are going to benefit from that. This is code enforcement, assessing, public safety, and public works. And what we're asking for is at the end of this fiscal year to take whatever's left over in those four departments and to roll it over into next year. And then we'll deduct that from the, the amount you saw here. And then we'll just ask for that amount of money in next year's budget instead of asking for it all at once. That way, we can start the process of the MOU with the state and then offset next year's budgeting request in order to participate in this program and provide quality services at the same time.
John?
I would suggest that we do that if we meet the revenue projections. If not, we come back in August and make a contingency request, if that makes more sense.
I was going to go there as well.
Yeah, but we should be okay. I think we're going to do that, hopefully. Our finance officer's going to give us some more precision on that. But it, it looks like we're going to be okay on revenue projections despite an estimate that was, you know, higher than actual receipts from the state. And so we'll come back, come back to this. And we should be in, in good shape either way, I think.
Are you allowed to carry over funds at?
Yes.
At the end of the year?
By vote of the Board of Selectmen. In the past, the Selectmen have, have decided to carry over funds. I'm not allowed to do it.
No, but I, I always thought town meeting had to decide on whether you could. Usually that goes into undesignated fund balance and then you go from there.
You can't, you can't go wrong with that. That's a strict interpretationist view of it. But I know historically we have done it. Whether we should have been doing it, that may be a different question possibly.
John, do you need an MOU today? Is August soon enough?
August would be fine. Like I said, really what they're looking to do is probably lock it in, in the December, January timeframe at the earliest.
So we really have till the end of the year?
Right. We, we just want to make sure we get the, our intentions in before July 1st so that that way, you know.
Because there is a certain, there are certain aspect to the project of building a, a critical mass of towns who want to participate in this and, and working out some of the details of, you know, is this a budding town working to help lower the cost? Or are we dealing with isolated towns?
Go on, Don.
I should know the answer to this because we discussed it in our meeting. But the Portland Water District, where are we on that? Were you making inquiry of them and are they going to be contributor?
I, I had left that up to the state to do. I, I'm actually going to a board meeting tomorrow and I can find out if they've made any inroads.
It would seem like maybe it's a, a five-way split with the district possibly because they could benefit as well or some share for the district because they would find value in the images that would be in the watershed, right?
Yes. There's certainly some potential there. I just don't know if the Water District is in a position to, to want to do that. I am, I am, there's some other entities that I'm going to approach on, on behalf of the GeoLibrary, but also some of the other towns to see if they may be able to assist as well. I just, I, I don't want to say anything right now because I don't want to put them on the spot before they've come to a decision. But there are some other entities that have regional scope in what they do, like the Water District and other utilities that may be interested in participating.
Well, utilities, I, I think of environmental organizations, but the problem there is that most of them have no money.
Yeah.
But they would find value in this data as well.
Yes. And in the past with GeoLibrary projects, we have reached out to other entities like that. Typically not always with the ortho imagery, but it's, it's not unprecedented. In York County, one of the water districts down there paid a large share of some of the costs in the towns that they served.
I think we should also use the time between now and the next meeting maybe to investigate potential other partners for cost sharing too.
And I have, I have a meeting next week with one of them to, hopefully I'll get an answer.
Also, I'm probably getting into semantics here, but, you know, this, this presentation has come before us with four of our departments willing to spend department money to move this forward. If, if the timing was not June and then, you know, July switching, it would be within the departments to make this decision on their own, I would think, if they had the finances in their budgets to do it. Am I, am I wrong? I mean, you, you wouldn't have to get approval from the town for a specific project if you had the monies within your budgets to do it.
I think you're correct, but I think because of the unique nature of this, the, in the aggregate, the amount of money that would be involved, I think we want you to know about it and, and, and say this is something we want to do as a community. But you're correct, I think.
So with that said, you know, from my standpoint, I'm hearing four departments say, this is important to us going forward. It will help us going forward. I, I can see Chris with one enforcement issue paying for the entire project personally. And, and if this data helps him, you know, prove that, you know, there was an issue, that would pay for it instantly. So personally, I'm in favor of trying to figure this out going forward. And I, I don't know how the other members are, if they're willing to say that now or if they want to wait till, till August. But, but it seems like a practical.
I, I just think from a Selectmen point of view, I don't think you can just say, we're going to carry over funds from the previous year.
Right.
Without town meeting approval.
Right, unused. We didn't need it, but we'll, so we'll put it towards this.
Right. I, I just don't think you can do that practically speaking and legally speaking.
Sure. So that would be our carryforward of money. However, if the departments got together, knew that they had money left over and entered into a contract to spend this much towards it in this year, that would be within their purview, correct? Then they, then the town could come to us in August and say, we would like to finalize this program, but we need X?
That, that would be true, I think, if you could enter into a contract before they close this just for the year, which I don't think you can, can you? Can you? We could?
You could.
So you have, you have two weeks' lesson.
So what I would suggest we do, because we've got competing issues going on here. I mean, we're saying that we want to make sure that we meet our revenue projections, so that's a top priority. You know, we're going to have likely unexpended funds by department. We'll know better as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year what those are. But let's assume we, and I guess either way, I mean, because we're talking about contingency in August, should we not make projections? But if the Selectmen thought this were important enough and it looked like we were going to make, make our revenue projections, then we could enter into the contract utilizing the monies from the various departments as outlined and secure this service before the close of the fiscal year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
More or less?
Or.
Or?
The departments as four feel that this is strong enough, if we're not going to meet revenue projections, that they would be able to split it amongst themselves over the course of a year and save that money over the course of a year. Because when they have this data, it's going to save them money. So in other words, if they know.
For coming year, you mean?
Right. If they know on July 1st that they want to do this and each department has to come up with, you know, 2,500 bucks or however they would split it, that's a possibility as well.
I mean, I think the question is, do the departments have anticipated surplus for this current fiscal year?
Like a couple hundred dollars. If that.
In which department?
Then you have an issue.
I don't, I don't even know. I couldn't pinpoint at this point, you know.
So, so there's not that much money that we're at that we're even talking about then? So, so it may, I mean, this, you know, that discussion doesn't, right?
So you come back in August and then figure out how affordable this is?
And let the monies from the departments lapse to fund balance?
That's where it's supposed to go.
Unless, unless you know what those monies are and can enter into this contract.
I'm not arguing with the process. I'm, I'm agreeing with that. I'm just telling you what the history has been in the past, not lately, but.
Or even if it's only a couple hundred dollars, you can use it as a down payment and then come back.
Sure, sure. Well, let's see what the end of fiscal year brings. You know, maybe we can do that, get some monies, which will reduce the amount you'd have to take from contingency. But we'd have to execute that money toward this purpose before the end of the fiscal year.
Would you like me to discuss that with the state to see if they'd be able to turn that around that quickly for you? I think they could.
I mean, do you want to know that the Select Board to determine whether or not we should go forward with this?
Well, that was going to be my next question after we work through some of these, some of these other technical issues as to the carryforward and, and, and such.
I think it's a great idea. I just don't, this seems kind of like how we're going to fund it is a little wishy-washy.
It's almost contingent on whether we make, make the revenues. So in other words, so if we do make it, then yes, we go. If we don't make it, then we come back later and find the money. So like, you know what I mean?
I remember as of July 1st, every department has a new budget.
Right.
And if it just goes to the top of the priority list, they'll find the money.
So we just decide as a board whether we want to push it through?
And, right, and enter into a contract in this year. Other questions for John or staff while we've got them?
Well, I'll make a motion to go forward with the project as long as the departments can come up with the money to fund it.
Second?
Any further discussion, comments?
I have a comment. So you're going the avenue that the departments split the money up. Okay.
At this point in time?
Yep.
So that, that could be, to clarify, that could be from balances from this fiscal year and from next fiscal year revenues?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, and it gives us time to figure that out.
And also gives me time to, with John, to scramble some money from other sources.
Correct. Any further questions, clarification? All those in favor? Four zero?
That's how you're supposed to do that voting thing. That's how you're supposed to do.
You did the same thing, just with less words.
Yeah, I'm very, I don't, I don't talk a lot. Vote. Let's go.
I, you know, I just like to hear myself talk a lot. John, thank you very much. Do you have any more other questions for us?
I don't. If, if anyone has any questions for me, I can answer either here or outside. I'd be happy to do that.
John, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Louise, I'm going to go back to you and item B, which is consideration of fiscal year 14, 15 annual committee appointments. Just because you got the award, Louise, doesn't mean you don't still have a couple of things to do for us.
I think I'll have a few things to do before the end of this month.
All right.
PAX for you, Trip.
I've given you a list of possible committee appointments. The only ones in here that obviously don't need to be appointed are those that are elected, budget finance and Select Board. But I've left them on the, on the list just because you exist. There are a few changes. I feel very happy that all of our committees are quite well populated. The only committee that is now, for all practical purposes, is defunct, is the recycling committee. The school still has an interest in recycling and there is one gentleman that is still going forward with that. But as far as the town is concerned right now, we have no members to the recycling committee. So if anybody out there is interested in, in getting involved with that, just let me know. But other than that, I would appreciate you approving this list and making them all appointees.
So Louise, one of the things you and I talked about last week briefly was the committee appointments that have votes associated with them that represent this board. And we determined that we thought it was MWAAC and GP COG, correct?
Correct.
Any other thoughts come to you since then that you got a epiphany in the middle of the night that said, okay, we need to make sure we have a representative for a voting board?
As far as I know, that's it.
So as far as MWAAC, Mark Gendron currently is serving and wants to continue serving as that. We have an alternate of Don Willard, correct?
Correct.
I am willing to continue on GP COG. And so that's going forward. And then we identified a new possible committee because we've been accepted into the urban area of PAX, which means that the federal government now deems part of Raymond urban. Exactly, Theresa. Thank you for that. That was a very nice exclamation point to that designation. Because of that designation, we also now have a voting member as part of PAX, which is the Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation Study. So I would like to make sure that we do have a representative there. Nathan has been our representative there. And Don, are you the alternate on PAX? Do you know?
Okay. Think so.
And I know that, I know that Nathan has been able to make it part-time. But Sam is not here this evening and has volunteered to be the Raymond representative to PAX. He does have transportation background. So if he's not on your list yet, Louise.
He is here.
He is, okay. He is, okay. So that's something that, um, I'm volunteering Sam for, seeing he's not here.
Well, I was just, I just said that to him, is he volunteer because he's not here? I second it, then.
Let's say that I had, let's say that I had a, a brief discussion with Mr. Gifford about the possibility of doing that, and while his arm was pinned way behind his back, he said yes. So he's gonna do that, um, for us. Um, so he is a change on the list. Tacey Hartley?
Yeah, she's still in cemeteries, and she's not in Raymond anymore, right?
Correct.
So do we have to take her off of that, then?
I guess that's up to you guys.
I don't, I didn't know. I, I thought it had to be just people in Raymond, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Basically, she's a working member. She could be taken off the list and still be active, I'm sure. Obviously, she's been a longtime member of, of the town of Raymond, and-
She's still on property in Raymond?
Yes.
Oh, they live around it?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, she still owns property, whether or not-
She's not a resident, she just owns property.
Okay.
Don?
You still have Sue Fielder. Sue Fielder should be, uh, removed. I will be making an appointment as soon as I can track down our acting ACO, Jessica Jackson.
Yeah, okay.
So that's something we've been meaning and needing to do. We've got to, to get her in and get her sworn. I've asked her actually to come in, and so hopefully she'll do that soon before you leave. I'll make another note of that, but, but Susan Fielder is, uh,
She is absent, yeah.
Yeah. She's working in, uh, a county animal control officer in Florida somewhere, yeah.
So we also have our current volunteer positions that we've all done. Anybody looking to change that? Everybody willing to stick with what they have?
Fine with what the six that I'm in.
I'm fine with the one.
Okay. So any other, uh, anybody else want to nominate people who aren't here for positions that are open?
Here, Billy. Let's see what's open for Sam. We can get him good.
All right, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept all the recommendations with the amended, um, removal of certain people on the list.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anybody from the audience want to speak on this? You gotta come up to your, come up to the mic, please. Introduce yourself and where you live, please.
John E. Waltz, 121 Wild Acres Road. And looking at the e-Packet, uh, list, it appeared that there are three vacancies on the planning board, is that correct?
Just one.
One, okay. I, I didn't see, uh, Mr. Lenny's name, or, uh,
Lenny.
Just, um, another, another, uh, Ben Crowder's name?
Ben Crowder, Steve Linang, and then it's just, those are our last two.
Okay, I, I just was looking on the, on the, uh, e-Packet list, and I didn't see their names. If they're still on, that's great.
Right, they're not on there.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, and it sounds-
It just looked like there were three vacancies on there.
That, that would be an error which will correct.
Okay, fine.
The, uh, the sworn members, uh, we, we try for absolute perfection.
We don't always get it.
We try for it, but we, we, we'll, we'll make that correction, thank you. Yeah, but, but, so there's no, no worries, there's one member, it's all good. But thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, and also, just, just so you know, um, planning board members, um, go through an application process, which is sometimes different than the volunteerism of some of these positions. And so, um, it, it may not be on the list, but they would have to be approved by us individually as they come on and off as well because of, of the things, so. Thank you for pointing that out.
Anyone looking at the list may see someone from the Tasseltop Committee, Sean A. Pepper, who is from Standish. And the reason for that is that we have a not, great number of non-residents who use Tasseltop, so under the bylaws, board of directors system, we have a non-resident member to represent that group, so that, if that sticks out at you, that's what that is.
Further questions, Louise?
As long as we're clearing up the list. Also, the Raymond Recreation Group, uh, for sports is not actually appointed by you guys. That's an independent organization.
That's correct.
So they're on this list as well, but aren't actually appointees.
They're not appointed, but they are for informational purposes.
And, and we don't appoint Bushido Karate, or Bushido, or whatever it is?
Correct, correct.
Yes. All those in favor? Opposed? Four zero? Louise, stay right there, please. In your e-Packet, you have a revised fourteen, fifteen fee schedule. Now, there are some, uh, changes that have been suggested. Um, those are noted, and, and, uh, if you've got your e-Packet on your computer, they're in red, changes to blue. But Louise, if you would briefly go over the recommended changes?
Okay, the first is under cemetery plot pricing, um, with perpetual care. And when you discussed it, disgusted it, discussed it sometime last winter, I don't think we actually came up with a price. So I offered here, because you were interested in raising the price of those lots. So I have offered here that we raise, uh, single plot resident cost of, by a hundred dollars to four hundred, and non-resident from five hundred dollars to one thousand. And I checked with, uh, a couple of places. Dick Sandborn, obviously, is our, our closest one. And the cremation burial plot opening is now two hundred from a hundred and seventy-five, and the grave opening, uh, fees for a casket is six hundred from five hundred. Now, those prices may vary depending on the person that does it. Dick generally does the ones in Raymond, but it's, you know, you, somebody else could do it and cost more, possibly less.
So this is what we pay to a private contractor?
We don't pay it. The, the, the person does-
The person pays it directly?
Through the funeral director, yeah.
And why are we listing it on our site?
Again, probably informational.
It's a, it's a minimum.
Okay.
I, I see it starts at-
I mean, I think people need to know there is a charge, whether we did actually have our public works go out and dig a grave or not, but that's what the going rate is right at the moment. Notary fees, um, for extensive work, we don't rarely, in fact, I've never had this happen. And it was twenty-five dollars, and it seems to me if you're gonna spend two or three hours helping somebody with an extensive notary project, it should be probably twice that, so I put it in as fifty. The registry fee at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds has gone from sixteen to twenty-two dollars. And that, we have no control over, that is their pricing, and again, that's there for information. And, um, the liquor license advertising was in there at thirty-five, which is way under what it costs us. So that is now up at a hundred, which is what it generally is to advertise for a liquor license.
That's kind of a pass-through, Louise?
Yes.
Yeah. There are also changes, folks will notice, that we've just, uh, made the fees that are associated with planning board, zoning board of appeals, just made those, um, cleaned them up, and, and made them listed, um, in this document now.
They're also changed in accordance with the new ordinance changes that were passed at town meeting.
Uh, two weeks ago?
Yes.
Yes, so those are up to date now. Questions from the board? Well, we have representatives here on these fees?
I think they're all acceptable. I'll check.
Seeing no further questions, can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the new proposed increases, prices, actually, changes?
I'm second.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Four zero? Thank you, Louise. I'm now gonna take stuff out of order again. We've had a, an issue in the back room with our executive sessions, and, and actually hearing the executive sessions has become quite difficult. And so I'm gonna make a change, at least for the foreseeable future, and until such time as, as it is an easier task for us to have executive sessions back there. From now on, I'm gonna put executive sessions at the end of our, or maybe not totally at the end, but, but after public comment, so that, um, the public does not have to wait for us to go through our executive sessions in order to make their comments, because in the future, our executive sessions will be held in this room. Staff and everybody else will be able to go into the back room with the noise. And unfortunately, I'm gonna have to ask the public, um, while we have executive sessions, to either wait outside in their cars, or, or just wait outside in the, in the evening. We will signal when the executive sessions are over, so folks can come back in. But in order to accommodate, um, public comment before we unceremoniously kick people out of the room for our executive session, I am gonna move public comment ahead of the executive sessions. But that does not mean that the public isn't welcome to hang around and then hear anything that comes in the, in the session, uh, after, after the executive session. So with that said, I'm now gonna open it up to item six, public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to speak at the mic. Please state your name and, uh, where you live.
My name's John E. Waltz, 121 Wild Acres Road, down on Raymond Cape. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the selectmen and also, uh, the town for allowing, uh, non-resident taxpayers to speak at town meeting. I found that, uh, very refreshing. After living, living in a, uh, town meeting town down in Massachusetts for eighteen years, the, uh, the, the atmosphere and everything, and the acceptance of, uh, the taxpayer, non-residents, was appreciated by myself and others. Just wanna thank the board for that opportunity. Uh, I'd like to follow up on, uh, one of the points that I made, uh, regarding, uh, the request that the, uh, selectmen consider funding out of the, uh, surplus funds, approximately one point nine million, I believe, to be available for unan- uh, unanticipated expenses to be used, uh, in the defense of the planning board's recent, uh, decision denying Fry Island's parking lot. I think it's important for several reasons. One is it enforces, uh, Raymond zoning ordinances. Secondly, it backs up decisions made by the planning board. I'm concerned that, uh, if, uh, if decisions are not backed up by the town, then it'll become more difficult to find people willing to volunteer on these positions, uh, since typically it involved hours of hard work. Notice that, uh, the planning board contributed almost nineteen pages out of the forty-some-odd-page town meeting, package that was handed out. So there's a lot of hours, there's a lot of hard work, and, uh, for people to put in that kind of time and effort, and then see their decisions overturned on appeal, because the town won't spend money to defend those decisions, has to be rather disheartening. So I foresee a recruiting problem, uh, in the future, if the town doesn't stand behind its boards and its, and their decisions. The, uh, court appeal, uh, has been delayed for ninety days, I guess, till the middle of July. Uh, so now's the time for us to take, take action, and I would recommend that the town allocate funds for legal expenses if needed. And by doing that, I believe that Fry Island may want to reconsider whether they really want to continue the appeal. They've already committed thirty thousand dollars to, uh, fund their, their appeal. And, uh, if, if, if the select board were willing to do, take comparable measures, uh, that might give them pause, and you know, the, sometimes court cases are negotiations, and it's poker game. Second point I'd like to, uh, bring up to the board's attention is that the request that, uh, the planning board act with all possible speed to revise the definition of municipal use, to protect the town against other towns' attempts to dump their problems in Raymond. Fry Island already has a gravel yard, uh, down on Raymond Cape. It's an industrial use, if you look at the definition of what's allowed in industrial districts. They still intend to build a parking lot over, uh, local residents' objections. And the way the ordinances are written today, there's nothing prohibiting another town from building whatever they want if they claim it's a municipal use. Fry Island has already told their residents they plan to build a warehouse. They have a euphemism, they call it a storage building. Uh, so tractor trailers with deliveries to the store and restaurant won't have to use the ferry. Four years ago, Fry Island officials talked about building a parking lot. You can see the video that they did for federal funding on YouTube, if you, uh, do a search on Pingree, Fry Island. So if they've been working four years to get this parking lot approved, uh, don't be surprised if in another few years, we're gonna see an application for a storage building. Storage building, a warehouse, is an industrial district use, not a residential use. So I'd ask that the town take protective measures to get the, uh, the definitions of municipal use, uh, into the ordinances as quickly as possible. I'd like to thank you for the time.
Thank you. Other public comments this evening? Seeing none, I'll end the public comment section for tonight. So now what I'm gonna ask for is a motion, and Joe, please, uh, please help me a little bit with this. Can we make a motion to go and handle all of these executive sessions? No, so we gotta do them one at a time? So we're gonna go in, out, in, out, in, out? Okay. May I please have a motion to go into E?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA subsection four zero five six E, to go discuss a few things with our attorney and our planner.
Second.
All those in favor? So, for folks, um, who might want to wait while we go into the executive session, we will go into executive session. I will signal when we come out, um, so that folks can come back in. We will say what happened in that executive session, we will then make a motion, go into the next executive session, and we'll do it all over again. Um, we do have three executive sessions, if not four, this evening, so. Thank you. Make a motion to come out of executive session, please?
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the town attorney to proceed as directed by the board's selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion for item F?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection four zero five six E, to have a discussion with our attorney. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
No, you have to make the motion.
Oh, I thought you said I make the motion.
No, I'm not.
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor? Have a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
No, wait, hey, oh, you're too fast, Lonnie.
Oh, motion on the other, sorry, my bad.
I'll make a motion to direct the town attorney to, uh, move forward with the direction of the select board.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Now, Lonnie?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA subsection four zero five six E, to dis- just have a discussion with our attorney and the code enforcement officer.
Second.
All those in favor? Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Make a motion to direct the town manager with the assistance of the code enforcement officer to reach a consent agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA subsection four zero five six D, consult, uh, consultation pertaining to IAFF Local four zero nine five AFLO CIO CLSC Union Contract Negotiations for Raymond Fire Department members.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Can I have a motion? Lonnie, I think you gotta do it.
For what?
For the-
To authorize the chief.
Do as the board directed.
Make a motion to have Chief Tupper do as instructed.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Opposed?
Oh, opposed? Sorry. Three to one. Sorry, Joe.
Sorry.
I keep my eyes open.
Can't keep everybody happy.
Nope.
That's what makes the world go around.
Selectman comment? Theresa?
See no hands.
This one's gonna be quick. Okay, update on the school board stuff. Um, the middle school advisory committee has made recommendations to the school board, and all three recommendations all come in with a new school, uh, building a new school. Um, the other thing is the school board is sitting on new valuation rates, and they will not be looking at them until August or September. So I asked for these new rates in March. They got them, I think, like, a month ago, March, April, like, beginning of May. And so all this time, we could be paying possibly lower taxes, and the school board is, again, sitting on them. So I highly.
What do you mean, sitting on them?
Sitting on them. They have to, they have to vote on them. What happens is I made the request in March, and, uh, based on two thousand and ten valuations, and I sent an email out, March, April, like, May, asking, did they get them? Katrina had thought that she had sent an email out to me, and she did not. She says the school board has them, and they're gonna look at them at the end of June on their school board meeting. And when I went to the school board budget meeting, um, in Wyndham, um, she had talked about it, and they said they are in, sitting on, they're not gonna even look at them until August or September. So they have, and then that the school board has to vote on those new rates, is what it is. So there's new va, two thousand and ten valuation rates.
Aren't they three years behind?
Um, you can do it every, we're in, in.
No, but I'm saying that two thousand and elevens should be out by now.
Well, we can do it every three years, is what the, they can run new ones. But the latest one was with the two thousand and ten, is what the state had told me. And that's what I asked the school board to run it on. So, um, but either way, um, if this goes through to a vote, we are looking to pay for a new middle school unless we decide whether we're gonna get out of here. I have lots of petitions, I mean, lots of signatures. I have turned them in. It's just a huge, huge, huge process. So if there's anybody out there in the public that wants to get on board with helping this process, um, it's, I'm looking for people to give me some points of view as to what the public is looking for as far as information. Our next step, besides turning in the petition, is, um, we have to have a public hearing. And the people have to vote, majority of a secret ballot vote, um, as to how much this town wants to spend to see whether we want to go forward or not with the petition. So yes. So, and anybody wants to get on, um, wyndhamraymondschools.org, um, it's under, uh, school board, uh, subcommittees and middle school advisory, and they can find the updated, um, recommendations.
Thank you, Theresa. Anybody else? I have an update from the library. Um, just some scheduling notes going forward. June nineteenth, they have a fundraiser, uh, stamping up party. On June twenty-first is the first annual Raymond Village Library bazaar, bazaar from ten to three. There'll be crafters, concessions, games for children, bounce house, and a white elephant table, um, great for families. On June twenty-second, the crafters' club will be there from noon to four at the library, making, uh, items to raise money for the library. On June twenty-ninth, the summer reading program begins, um, thanks to a five hundred dollar grant from Gorham Savings Bank. Um, and on July thirteenth is the kickoff of the annual book sale, where books will be for sale at the library. Um, if there's, uh, any more information needed, please go to the library website.
Just was gonna ask you, are all those posted?
All those are posted on the library website, um, and, uh, also on the Facebook page for the library. And I believe, um, you can get to the, uh, library page through the raymond.orgs page as well. Anybody else? Don?
Okay, very briefly. Road improvement paving update. Major work completed on the Cape Road. Shim and overlay, approximately three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Shoulder work and striping is not included in that number. The shoulder work and striping, uh, striping is in the future, shoulder work underway. Hawthorne Road now underway, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So if you haven't been down to the Cape, you may want to take a look at the, um, what's happening with the proceeds of the bond. Uh, Main Street is out to engineering design. Then we'll move on to Valley Road. Last year, Plains Road was put into binder from the bond. So that's a very brief update on what's happening with road work. Um, moving on, we are getting a new ambulance delivered within the next three weeks, roughly?
Uh, this weekend.
This weekend, okay. So it's gonna be in service because we have some, some issues in the department that have taken us three to four weeks to get it in service, i.e., we need some repair work done on another piece of apparatus. So, long story short, in within three or four weeks, we will sell our retired ambulance to Fry Island, the two thousand and four ambulance, for twenty thousand dollars. We're very happy with that. Fry Island's very happy with that. So that's a, that's a, a deal. Um, retiring town clerk, Louise Lester, open house at the town office, uh, all, all day business hours on Friday, June twenty-seventh. Please come by, say hello, or actually, I guess, goodbye to Louise. Although, as Louise indicated, she's gonna be around town and very active after her vacation out west. But folks, uh, in the public should be encouraged to come, come see Louise on the twenty-seventh. The town office will be closed for year-end, um, work on, uh, July first, a Tuesday, and then also on July fourth and fifth for the holiday. That's it.
But open July second and third?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
There'll be no, no select.
I could have one other thing.
Yeah, there's no select board meeting in, um, July, um, per our normal schedule. So, Don, you have a date for August?
Uh, right, I had one, one more thing, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Crossed it out, but I, but I, we did do town clerk interviews, uh, on Monday, and so we're very happy with the candidates we had, and that process is underway. More details coming. Um, so, yes, meeting, August, uh, and my thing just flashed out here, August twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, next meeting, August twelfth.
Are we gonna have a meeting at the end of the month here to see if we make revenue?
Um, I did speak with Theresa about the possibility of a meeting at the end of the month, but after conferring with Don and, and the, um, and our financial department, we're not gonna have solid numbers for the end of the year until all the bills, uh, are processed and the revenues are processed. So, um, as we've done in past years, we will be able to make final adjustments to this year's budget if necessary at our August meeting, which would be before they close the books for the year and send them to the auditor.
Okay.
Anything else, Don? That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, there are no, um, payroll or treasurer's warrants for this month's meeting. So, yes, Lonnie, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you all.